All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This meeting and all meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin statute so the citizenry may be aware of the time and the place and the agenda of this meeting. We'll have a roll call.
Appleby is absent. Brunner?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
At this time, it gives me great sorrow to pass on that we lost one of our council people in the last few days, Jim Zandrol from Ward 1. It's, we're gonna miss him. Okay, I'd like to move on then to approving the agenda.
Please pledge allegiance.
Okay, we can do that too if you want. All right, excuse me, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Bruce Brunner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll ask for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. I look for a motion then to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on September 22nd, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the common council meeting on September 22nd, 2014.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular council meeting's minutes from September 22nd. Any questions or comments or additions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. All right, next we will go to citizens' appearance, Mr. Zepoy, library representative.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for the mess that we haven't cleaned up yet. We've been in contact and we've talked to a couple of dealers, they've been here in the last few days, and we have a group that will be coming in from Stevens Point, but they're having a big book sale this coming week, and they will be here around the first of November and probably pick up just about everything that you see here. So by your next meeting, we should have this halfway cleaned up, hopefully, I'll say it this way. Also, we have contacted, or I've contacted Tri-City Glass, and we've had our windows fixed upstairs. We had two of the crank-out windows that were broken, and they are starting to show their age, obviously, and they came and fixed those, made sure that we had all of our insulation taken care of with the strips in between the windows. And also, the reading door, or the door by the reading area for the young people, has worked considerably, and we're getting a brand-new insulated door put in there, and hopefully will be installed within the next week, or before the snow flies, I'm guaranteed. So, it's a short meeting, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, friends.
Okay, we'll move on to the next, Casey Cook?
Hi, my name's Casey. Nice to meet you guys, first time being here, but I'm representing the Wapaka First Responders, Wapaka Waibika. We will be coming into effect and starting, our due date, or technical as it was written in the papers, was November 1st. I did not put that in there, that must have been put in by somebody else, actually. We are hoping to be starting up by the latest December, though. The major thing that I'm coming up to you guys is wondering if, for coverage-wise, are you guys wanting coverage in the city as well?
That would, if you ask, if you have a question like that, usually what would happen is if you pose it to the council, they can refer it to the Police, Fire and Ambulance Committee.
Okay.
And I think either in November or December, Gold Cross is going to be coming to that committee too, so that might be an appropriate point to come up with.
The real question behind it is, is we paid for our insurance, we had to pay out of our pockets, we actually paid personally on mine, and we're wondering, seeing as how this is to deal with the agenda and pricing and stuff like that budget-wise, we're wondering if there was a chance that we might be able to get some type of assistance, just a small percentage, to be able to help us out to pay for that insurance, seeing as how we would like to be covering this area for you guys.
Yeah, the best way to go about that would be find whatever the dollar amount is that you're looking for, or that you need, and then you can send it into City Hall.
Okay.
Probably in writing would be a good way to go about it, and then at the Police, Fire and Ambulance Committee, they can take it up and review it then. We're talking about the budget tonight, but the budget doesn't actually get adopted until the November meeting, so that would be appropriate if you're at the November.
And that's the reason why I showed up tonight, because of this.
Yep, yep, that's good, that's good, but yeah, what you'll want to do is just submit a request in writing to City Hall, and then it can be considered on the next Police, Fire and Ambulance Committee agenda.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay?
We are gonna move on then to our committee reports. First one will be the Planning Commission, and there is a recommendation of a site plan approval for Agarpure's Feta Expansion.
You might want to let them up first?
So, we will ask, I believe it's Tim and Grant from Agarpure, they will tell us about their expansion.
Thanks, everybody. I'm Tim Peter, I'm Director of Engineering for Agarpure, and Grant?
I'm Grant Ducatch with Excel Engineering. We are representing Agarpore in the civil engineering and architecture on the project, as well as some other engineering services.
I guess we're here to just kind of just explain a little bit what we're up to, and this is kind of a dream that we've been dreaming for the last 10 years anyways, and now we've finally reached the point in our production where we need to actually do something. So, what you see in front of us here is actually a plan to add on to the south side of our current facility. What you see here is half of our existing facility up in this quadrant, so we're looking primarily at the south lot. This would be the old Benson Building, or what is now Performance Industrial Products, and then the city-owned property over here currently, and then the Taylor Cheese Building down here. So our plan would be to continue to extend south. We've already worked on a land purchase agreement with Performance right through here, and we're currently working with Pat and the city on taking over some of the property over here to allow for our truck turnaround and possibly future additions sometime down the road on that. Our current facility that we're looking to add is about, oh, just under 70,000 square feet, with some areas have a second floor with locker rooms, lunchrooms, and that type of things. We have mechanical rooms on the second floor as well, and we have some modifications to existing areas that will be done, and a new truck loadout going in down here on the south side of the building. We're gonna be working with Performance, sharing kind of the space between the two facilities, and we're gonna be doing a lot of prep work, kind of enhancing that property a little bit. We're gonna be laying down new gravel for our trucks to get through, along with their trucks to get through, and we have a little bit of parking going on here on the south side, as well as this lot back here that we're looking to put in for the purposes of the construction, for the contractors to park, and then also a lay-down area for the equipment and building materials as they show up on-site. We're also working close with Pat on your future addition down here with your wastewater, and trying to work out where this dividing line would be on how much property you want to retain down there, and then also allowing you to actually use some of this space that we are setting up for your lay-down area as well, too, for your project. So, kind of working out together there a little bit, and I think everybody's on board with that part. Right now, this expansion would add in production numbers about another half a million pounds of milk a day to our facility, which we currently run about 2.5 million to 2.7 million pounds a day through the plant. So that'll take us up close to 3 million, or just a little bit more a day that we bring into this facility. As far as truck traffic, again, most of it for the milk side will continue to come in off of Third Avenue back around the plant into our current milk-receiving, and right now, we bring a lot of vans up into this back area now for loading out product, and we will continue to do that, but moving it a lot into this new loading dock area down here on the southeast side. Any questions? I can help answer if you want.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
Can you, you mentioned you're looking at about 70,000 square feet that you're looking to add on.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of your Feta production, what do you currently have now, and what are you looking to move that to?
Ah, that is a good question. I want to say we are somewhere around 25,000 to 30,000 square feet in the existing Feta facility, which is this area out of our plant right now, so you can see how much bigger it grows with that. So, and right now, we make, in terms of production numbers, we run about a half a million pounds a day of milk there, so we're actually doubling production that we currently can do there. We turn out about 100,000 pounds a day of product, we can turn out anywhere ups to 200,000 to 250,000 pounds a day of product coming out of this facility then. So, provided the sales are there, so they've got to do their homework for us, so.
Can you speak a little bit about the investment that's involved?
Yes, we are looking to invest, it's a pretty good number, about just a shy under $55 million is going into this project. That also includes a wastewater expansion on our end to handle the additional water flow coming out of this addition, and then, of course, some pre-planning work. We've got to do an electrical service upgrade as well, as you all know, We Energy's doing a campus-wide upgrade to the city. That means we're also gonna be doing a few things along with that plant too as well. That's all rolled into this project, and then along with that, some extra site work with the parking area and whatnot down here that we want to have, so.
What are you looking at for job growth with the project?
Well, I think at the end of the day, I don't have the specific numbers, but just knowing how this plant operates, we're probably gonna be looking at 20 to 30 people that we'll be bringing on throughout the next number of years and that. It'll be a slow growth for us, the Feta side of the business is kind of a specialty area. It's been on a steady uphill for the last 15 years, and we continue to see it be that way, but again, it's a slow growth, so you're not gonna see any of these turns and go uphill, unless we, lo and behold, take over somebody from that standpoint and take a whole customer base away from somebody. But again, probably somewhere in that 20 to 30 people we'll be adding from a staff standpoint, and those will be probably a combination of maintenance people, supervisors, and hourly operators, so.
Mr. Peter, I'm Scott Rasmussen from Ward 1.
Nice to meet you.
The, why do you sustain that milk production?
How do we sustain it? We have, actually, right now, we can't find enough home for our milk at the moment, but a lot of that is our own patron milk, and years past, we always used to go about 85% was our own patron milk, and then we would purchase the last 15% out on the market and that, but we've taken over quite a slug of milk with the, I don't know if you're familiar with the dairy industry, but Land O' Lakes out in Denmark actually closed their doors back on July 1st, and we took over that milk supply, so we now need to find a home for it, and this is one of our avenues, along with our new plant up in Luxembourg that we're just completing at the moment. Thank you.
Can you give a little bit of an idea on construction schedule and how long what you're proposing is going to be under construction?
Sure. Well, we're hoping to get started any day now before the snow flies. We need to get the building up by, I'll call it, July 1st, because the equipment that we're gonna be using for the production area is coming from Germany, and that is due to arrive somewhere around the end of July to mid-August next summer. So, with that, and then they have a number of months, right now, we're tentatively looking at around March, April of 2016 by the time we get this facility up and running. Trying to think if there's any other highlights to the program, but it's pretty exciting for us as Agarpure. We are, I don't know, maybe just a little background on who we are now, of course, we used to be the old Waibika Milk Products owned by the Wagners, and then in 1997, they merged with the Simons Group out of Little Shoot, Simon's Specialty Cheese. In 2000, then we bought outright the Crown Dairy Facility up in Luxembourg, Wisconsin. So we operated with those three facilities till about 2008. In 2003, we actually just changed the name of the organization to Tregga Foods, just to give it some single identity at that point, still same ownership at that point. In 2008, then, we were actually bought outright, our whole organization, by a company out of Montreal, Canada called Agarpure, and we were their first real acquisition into the States. They're quite a large organization up in Canada, in fact, they go toe-to-toe with Saputo, I'm sure a few of you have heard of that name before. And so, Agarpure took a pretty aggressive approach to the United States, and we were their first real acquisition. Since they purchased us in 2008, they bought two facilities in their fluid milk division, and then they bought another facility in the cheese division out in Iowa, and then they bought a couple of what we call ingredient plants for the whey drying, one in La Crosse, one in Preston, Minnesota, and then now recently, we just made another acquisition for a big dairy outfit out of, based out of La Sourd, Minnesota, called the DeVisco Corporation. And they have plants in Lake Northern, South Dakota, and Jerome, Idaho as well, so that's all what's happened with Agarpure just in the last few years, so they're in quite a terror, and they've made quite a shake in the dairy industry, and they're very excited about these types of projects for us, because they don't get to build buildings in Canada because of how the whole structure works up there with the dairy industry, where it's still controlled by the government, so the only thing they can do to grow is to buy somebody, so they really don't get these opportunities to actually grow within, so they're very excited about it. In fact, we just had the entire Agarpure board down here last week, Thursday, to visit our Luxembourg facility, and we just got done spending over 100 million on that project, and they were really excited and really happy about that type of opportunity, and they look at the Waibika project as another area where they're willing to spend some money, so it's pretty exciting for all of us, including the city of Waibika, of course, so.
There's an interesting method for your financing, the 55 million for this project, can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, because of the, again, going back to the dairy industry in Canada, everything is set at the beginning of the calendar year, so they know how much your milk price can be, they know how much your cheese price can be for the whole year, and of course, it's always favorable to them. Unlike here, you're playing the markets all the time, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but up there, it's almost a win-win. Again, their downside is that they can't grow within, they can only buy somebody else, so they can only get so big, but they keep pocketing all this money, so we literally paid cash for our 100 million dollar project up at Luxembourg, and we're gonna do the same for this. So, yeah, they're for real.
That's a nice point.
And then, you mentioned the acquisition of DeVisco.
Yep.
What did that do?
Yeah, that kind of changed the outlook on cash flow for the organization. That was a huge purchase, it actually put them in a position they've never been in, where they got to now do a little more pre-planning on that side of things, but with this project, of course, we had it approved before they went and bought the other organizations, so we're in pretty good shape. You know, what it's gonna do in the future for us is probably gonna have us looking a little bit harder as to how we can justify all the numbers and that, which we did anyway, so it'll be interesting as we move forward, but again, the organization's.
Excuse me, Tim?
Yep.
And for the operations in the U.S., I understand that DeVisco is a pretty big multiplier then for Agarpure, like, almost double?
Yeah, they would be equivalent, if you just looked at our three facilities here, the Waibika facility, Little Shoot, and our Luxembourg facility, very similar, but yet they were a little bit bigger. Their Jerome Idaho plant brings in 6 million pounds of milk a day out there, and the Lake Northern plant is somewhere over 4 million, and the La Sourd plant does, I think, in that 4 or 5 million too as well, so, yeah, big plants.
So they're making major moves, obviously, in the United States, and we're benefiting from that, which is great.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So we hope to continue as future plans for this site. Again, we actually make two types of product at the Waibika facility, one the Feta, as we talked about, the other big one is our cheddar production, that we, primarily our biggest customer there is Kraft, and one of our bigger customers for the Feta side is Kraft as well, too. You see our stuff under those labels of, for the Feta side, the Athenos, the Treasure Cave, those are all coming right out of this facility, and on the cheddar side, it would be the Sharp Cheddar, the Cracker Barrel Sharp Cheddar, and the Extra Sharp, all the Extra Sharp comes out of Waibika, so, some pretty high-end stuff, yeah.
It sounds like you're gonna be up to production in 2015, late 2015?
Early 2016, yeah.
2016?
Yep.
I guess, just to comment to Pat, with that, is that gonna be after our upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant is done?
The goal right now is the wastewater treatment plant would be coming online in January, February 2016.
Okay.
And it's with this in mind that we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
When they turn this on, now when they basically turn their plant on, it's not going to be.
Right.
From day one, it's full bore, it's, my understanding is they're gonna run the new plant, and the old plant, run the new plant, and then ramp it up.
That's correct.
But yeah, but the goal, in November, we'll be on the treatment plant, taking that back up again. Part of, we did bid out the treatment plant project last fall, and part of why it was put on hold was because this came out, I think our bids were out October, November, and I believe there was snow flying when we met to find out about this, which was probably November, December, so it was good timing that we didn't commit to the treatment plant and then immediately have to scale it back up again.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but no, it's, it's very carefully coordinated, even as Tim mentioned, we're looking at how do we set up our site next to where they set up theirs, so.
Yeah.
It'll be tight, but it'll be progress, I guess, that's what it'll look like.
Right, exactly.
Well, it's important, especially the access of, you know, what's gonna be coming through, so.
And just to comment on that, one of the things that we did in some of our site engineering and layout is we took some of the ideas that Tim and Agarpore had for their possible current expansion, I'm sorry, their current expansion and possible future expansions to add on to the site here, so we have laid out the site with a lot of future additions in mind when they happen, Agarpore doesn't know exactly, but when they do happen, we're ready for them. We're rerouting some utilities so that they're out of building footprints, and we're coordinating with the city, so that when we move forward, we're not gonna have an overlap, we're not gonna have to move things, we're really planning for the future, this is the project now, but we're laying down the footprint to be able to expand and meet Agarpore's needs as their council expands in the future as well.
Thank you.
Is there a possible chance, Tim, with that development, that there would be a convenience store that you would have, or no? No, right now, at this time, there were no plans to do any sort of a convenience store. Yeah, it's something that we talked about years and years ago, but I think with Star Dairy doing what they did here in town, that kind of just told us, no, let's just not go down that path, so. We do sell a little product out of our front office area for our folks that work there and other family members or whatever, but that's about the extent of it, so.
Any other questions?
So if I want to buy some Sharp Cheddar, what label should I look for?
The Cracker Barrel label, yeah, Kraft, yeah, they come in those little sticks, yeah.
Do you think the IGA has it?
That is a good question, yeah, exactly.
Or they should have some.
They should have, yes, exactly. Yeah, it's kind of funny, because when you're in the business, you tend to kind of wander through the stores, and you tend to lose track, too, of where you've been and which store you actually seen some stuff in, but it is interesting where you find it once in a while, too, but.
The other thing, Bruce, would be is to have a family member apply there, and then you can have.
Yeah, there you go. That, or you can drive down to Little Shoot, and you can go to our store down there.
Find out, yeah.
Yeah, we have a store at each of the other two locations.
What street is it on?
Right up to 41.
It's on County Road Avenue.
Oh, right there, that's, I got a buddy that lives down the road.
There you go.
My brother-in-law works there, so maybe I'll strip out here.
There you go, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You bet, thank you.
So the recommendation from the Plan Commission was to approve the site plan for the Feta Expansion.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan for the eight-year-per-year Feta Expansion. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to recommend the approval of the site plan for the Agarpure Feta Expansion. I take it there's no more questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Move on to B, Finance Committee.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, make a motion to draft an agreement with Gordon Neemath to allow farming on city-owned parcels in the Industrial Park.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend drafting a agreement with Gordon Neemath to allow farming on the city-owned parcel, Industrial Park East. Any questions or comments?
Yep, just a quick comment, this would be to formalize the arrangement that you've had with Gordon Neemath. You have a draft agreement in your packet, what that is, that's actually the agreement that Dean Cornelius has for Industrial Park West. Attorney Calney is gonna take a look at this agreement and make sure, just add a couple of liability indemnity-type clauses there, but the idea here is to sign off, or I guess the Finance Committee recommended approving or entering into an agreement with Mr. Neemath, because he has performed the same service that Mr. Cornelius has had, and he's agreeable to the same types of terms.
Okay, so, if we have no other questions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, make a motion for approval of the Clifton-Larson-Alen to perform fiscal year 2014 audit services.
I'll second it.
Okay, motions were made and seconded for the Clifton-Larson-Alen fiscal year 2000 audit services. Any questions or comments?
Well, this is just to renew for this year when they do the audit services next spring.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And lastly, on behalf of the Finance Committee.
You go back to number two.
The phone system?
No, excuse me, number two. On behalf of the Finance Committee, we recommend to, make a motion for approval to purchase the Mitel phone system for City Hall through quotes from Heartland.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any questions or comments?
Real quick comment, we have, we did receive two quotes, one was from Enterprise Systems Group, the other one was from Heartland. The Enterprise Systems Group quote for the phones that we need right now was just about $9,000, it was like $89.95. The quote from Heartland for comparable phones was about $100 more. This is a system that you can plug into City Hall, and as we look at the renovation project, we can expand upon the system with just buying extra phones, and the phones themselves, for the types of phones we'd be looking at, are about $100 a piece cheaper when you go through Heartland. So even though for right now, we would pay $100 more, we would end up making that up as you build it out and add more phones. Right now, we're looking at just two phones for the police department, the goal would be. Uh, right now, we're looking at just two phones for the police department. The goal would be at least one more there, um, and then building it out, phones in the the new building.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Now, lastly, make a motion on behalf of the Finance Committee to approve checks at number three zero eight nine nine through three zero nine six nine, totaling one hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and the monthly financial statements.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? We'll have a real call.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Carrie, lift all ayes.
Okay. Anything else, Scott?
No, that'll be all, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee.
All right. Like to make a motion to recommend approval of the snow removal rates from Fox Brothers for the fall of 2014 through spring of 2016.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the snow removal rates from Fox Brothers for fall 2014 through spring of 2016. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick, uh, comment. We we spoke at Public Works about the nature of these prices that you're given. And then we related that to the actual strategy we're going to have for snow removal this year. To build on what we've done in the past, the county is willing to pick up some of the extra main streets, which includes Main Street and some of the hills, so that when they're coming into town on X and F, they're willing to pick up some of the other streets, too. And and I hate to say that usually the county streets are the better streets, but usually there're quite a bit of material out of them and they're on them multiple times during the day, so that's going to be a benefit. Uh, the other piece, as as a lot of you are aware, is that 2014 was the first year that we leased the John Deere tractor. And for the whole year, it cost us about eight thousand dollars to get about a hundred thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment. The amount that's dedicated to snow removal was about twenty-eight hundred to three thousand dollars. The rest is in yard waste and composting, you know, sites, facilities. So the idea would be with increased load from the county, getting extra streets, we are going to have one more year under our belt to be able to use the John Deere with the plow. And then the rates here are if we would ever need Fox Brothers to clean out downtown, pick up side streets. Any of those services listed there, which I believe go all the way down to, um, and it's loading on my computer here yet, but a a man with a snow blower or a man with a shovel. You know, if you call and you need somebody to do that, that's what these rates are. It's not necessarily a contract that says you have to call Fox Brothers, but it does say that if you call them, they will be there for you. So when we look at what they offer, that's what it is. Whatever we need them to do, when we call them, they will come and do it for us. And really, that's not any different than what you've had in the past. Some of the other services or some of the other methods that we're using, those are a little bit newer. And then the other idea is that instead of ten percent salt, ninety percent sand, we bumped it up to fifty-fifty last year, and the idea is we can get a better rate than buying bulk salt upfront. So we'll be throwing a hundred percent salt when we need to. That'll keep the sewers cleaner all the way down the line. We've we've talked about it quite a bit, so. Hopefully, things are getting, you know, getting better or improving. That's all I got on that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Anything else, Nick?
Nothing else for council.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to police, fire, and ambulance.
No action for council this month.
Okay, thank you. Public health and relief. Scott, would you like?
We're gonna, actually, if we could hold that item, there's a recommendation to modify the NSF fee charge that we bill out or charge to customers. Right now, our PSC approved rates through the water department say twenty-five dollars, our ordinance says twenty dollars. We talked a little bit at ordinance on how we need to change that, but there are quite a few other fees that either aren't listed specifically in our ordinance or need to be updated. And in speaking with the city attorney, he mentioned that we should probably do a bigger review on that. And knowing that we'll have an ordinance committee meeting coming up to talk about pitfalls and vicious animals, we can hold it till until then. And then it'll come to you in ordinance form. If that's okay?
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so then this gets amended?
Yeah, we'll hold it till the next ordinance meeting, if that's okay. It'll be expanded on.
All right. Then we'll move on to recreation.
No action for council this month.
Okay, Bruce. Public property and purchase?
We have no action for council.
No action. New business, street permit for Hometown Group on October twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen.
I will make a motion to approve the permit for Hometown Group on October twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Any other questions? We have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconded to grant the permit for Hometown Group for October twenty-sixth. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
How much of the day is that? It's enough. What what's the hours on that?
Three to five.
Three to five. Same hours as trick-or-treating.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. New business, B, discussion on Ward One Alder Person vacancy.
As the mayor mentioned with the passing of Mr. Zandrow, we took a look at ways to notify the public that there's a vacancy. And in working with Mike, we put a note in the water bill, in the utility bill. And what we told the public was if you live in Ward One and you're interested in, um, serving or being appointed to the vacant seat, that you would have until next week, Monday, which is October twenty-seventh, to submit your interest and a little bit, you know, a little bit of a bio on who you are, why you're interested. I I could tell you, I think there's actually four or five people that I've talked to or heard from that are interested, which is very good. The idea, when we schedule our November meetings, Attorney Kalney is going to request that on November third, which is two weeks from tonight, that you have a special council meeting, that's the same night as the Finance Committee meeting. It may work well if you stick to the timeline of October twenty-seventh and then next week, do some type of a vetting of candidates. And then at the November third meeting, you'd be able to appoint someone to the post. It'll help you on that end because then it gives them three, four weeks, well, two weeks, I guess, to get up to speed on the budget. Instead of getting appointed and then having to deal with the budget, maybe the treatment plant, maybe City Hall, a whole number of issues there. And the reason why you have, and you have a handout real real quick right here, and what this is, is it's from state statute on how you fill a vacancy. And it doesn't say too much about how they get nominated or how they're brought to the council for review. But what it does say in state law is it's up to the council, and I'll I'll just read it real quick here. It's it's Chapter seventeen point two-three, vacancies in city offices, and I'm just skipping through to the highlighted parts. Vacancies in offices of cities operating under the general law or special charter shall be filled as follows. It talks about the mayor. In this case, in the office of Alder Person, by the common council. So the appointment is made by the common council. Unless otherwise ordered by the common council, a successor shall be elected for the residue of the unexpired term on the first Tuesday of April, next after the vacancy happens. In case it happens, no later than December first, preceding the first Tuesday in April. And the layperson's explanation on that is if you have an opening and if you need to make an appointment before December first, you can go to a special election next April. And the key words on that sentence are unless otherwise ordered by the common council. The reason why it's on your agenda tonight is either you can wait six months until you appoint someone, or the common council can acknowledge a process. And what I laid out basically in talking with the mayor was a schedule over the next couple of weeks, which we feel can ease somebody into the role of council person. Now, it's probably going to be overwhelming for almost anybody, but at least we can, there'll be some time that we can bring them in before the budget. What you'll probably wanna do tonight is make a recommendation on how you wanna go about filling. Now, do you want applications when they come in? Essentially, it's going to come to City Hall and we'll have a list of names. How do you want that to be vetted, and when do you want an appointment to be made? And what I'm thinking is, sort of like I laid out, next week would be a good time for somebody to be vetting it. Now, if you have a quorum of the council or of any committee, you'd have to have a noticed meeting. But I think the idea of November third, when you'll have Attorney Kalney here, and the uh, the opportunity to have a special council meeting, sort of midway between now and the budget, that's probably a good time. So basically, what we're looking for is a method and a date on how you wanna do this.
So did did the notice to the general public go out in the water bill already?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And it was, just so I'm clear, so, and then it was, um, saying come fill out a form if you're interested.
No, it was interested people should contact either the mayor or City Hall.
Okay.
And we figured that way, we would at least start to develop a list.
Okay.
All right. We haven't had a form, anything like that, and and the idea with that was the water bill went out last, a couple of weeks ago, and the next water bill doesn't go out till probably November tenth or eleventh, so it was a free way for us to get some publicity out there on the potential vacancy. That's the most likely way to get ahold of the most people, I guess, for the least cost.
And how many have you received so far?
Um, I have emails with people's names saying that they'd like to be considered. I think I've got two.
How many? Did anybody actually come in and fill a form out?
No, because.
No, because we didn't prescribe or develop a form.
So we have two people.
I've got emails, right, right. And I've got phone calls from at least three others now. They said they'd like to be considered.
I mentioned to Pat that I felt that it would be nice to have them give us a little background and maybe a reasoning of some sort of what makes them wanna go for this position, just so we had a little bit to go off of.
If you needed a form or if you wanted a form put together, we could probably get one together fairly quickly, but, you know, the the citizen committee appointment form. The idea that we asked for was what are you interested in? Tell us about yourself fairly briefly, and I mean, that's something that we could.
No, that wasn't.
We have time this week to tell people, you know.
That wasn't my thought behind the question. I guess my thought behind the question is, does it, is it a con, do we have a concrete? Like, an email is more concrete to me than somebody just saying like, oh, calling, oh, yeah, I'd be interested in that, maybe, you know. Maybe not everybody feels that same way, though. I don't know.
Yeah. Part of, you know, and this might help you out, so I have two people that have submitted emails to me basically saying I'm interested, I'd like to be considered. Now, if there's something specific that you want from them, more specific than, hey, I'm interested, I can contact them and get, you know, we have a week, so that should be fine. My question for you is, knowing that there's two people already, and I know that there's potentially four or five, how do you want to get to one? Do you want five people at a future special council meeting, or do you want some sort of vetting? And that's where I mentioned, any type of vetting next week, you have to be careful. I mean, you could have a special council meeting to vet if you'd like, or interview people. I think it's something you can do in open session. I mean, that might even be a good thing, because through the miracles and wonder of technology, we're getting our meetings online and people are able to see those for as long as the internet is running.
I'd like to see that where where we interview them, open session. Mayor's position, recommend the person do the council for approval.
He can. What Attorney Kalney is saying, he can, if that's what the council would like. You know, if you would like the mayor to do some vetting, that's acceptable if if you make, take an action tonight to say this is what we would like.
It's only five people. I don't see anything wrong with having them, giving them five minutes on Monday.
Yeah, each of them has five minutes.
Or so, to state their case. Knowing that we're gonna need somebody to run for office and and a few weeks after that.
After that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we should. I think everybody should be invited down to to apply for.
What if you get ten?
Well, then you get ten.
You'll know next week anyway, though. You'll know with a week's notice.
Right, because you would put a deadline on it, obviously, before the third.
What we put in the water bill was next Monday, the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh.
But that's a soft deadline because it's really up to you guys, you know, with whatever you wanna do.
Actually, I think it'd be awesome if we got ten people.
Yeah. Seriously.
History doesn't say that, so, you know. And and just because history tells us we have a hard time getting people to run for office, I don't particularly wanna shut anybody out. If not for that, maybe they'll be interested in committees and boards. So, I say.
Yeah.
Can you hold on while I change batter in the mic? We're back. And you wanna do appoint who? Thank you.
But I would let them know that they have to, um, that then by, um, the thirtieth, you need confirmation that they're interested. So that you have time to put out a packet.
Thursday?
Thursday, the thirtieth.
I think we said the twenty-seventh, didn't we, Aaron?
Well, that's the end of the, uh.
Right, that's when they have to really let us know, is the twenty-seventh. So that's the reason we did it, was the twenty-seventh, so they had time to, the staff had time to put things together.
That's fine.
Do we have a list of job duties and responsibilities, per se?
You do.
That Carrie, that an alderman, Alder Person, has to do so that they can review that, too?
You do, but that's that's one thing that we haven't really. We've been updating quite a bit since I've been here, and that's one thing that I think we've sort of, every time something like this has come up, we've said, wait, what about those? You've got them. I mean, the council actually adopted job descriptions for the council or for the mayor and. You've got them. I mean, the council actually adopted job descriptions for the council or for the mayor and the council, so you have them.
Okay. So we're leaving it for the twenty seventh to be the end of?
End of.
End of, and the staff can put things together?
Yep.
And then that?
Special counsel on the third.
Okay.
Anyone, everybody? Anybody that applies? I think so. Able to interview? Okay.
As long as you're eighteen.
Right, wow, right.
Resident.
Yep.
Limit it to the first ten. We're expecting a good turnout.
Okay. And we will move on.
You, you probably want to make a, did you make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
How you want to do that? Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, hold a special council meeting on November third. And that we invite all interested residents of the first ward to speak for five minutes.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Through business, we have a resolution number five five eight. Resolution allow, resolution allowing the clerk, deputy clerk and special registration deputy to conduct election day registrations. Do we have a motion for that?
I think you want to mention what the, why that's important?
Right now, state statute says that the only people that can register voters on election day are your election, are your chief election inspectors. Um, they, a lot of times get backed up with the voting process and they have to take time out to go and register voters. This being said, if myself, being at the polls most of the days, especially on the busy elections, can then take the voters and register them and leave the election inspectors and the chief inspectors to keep the flow of the voters through the polling place. And not cause any type of backups.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt resolution number five five eight. Resolution allowing the clerk, deputy clerk or special registration deputy to conduct election day registrations. Any other questions or comments?
Should we go?
Okay.
Roll call, though.
Roll call.
Runner?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Ray Asmussen?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carried with four ayes.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I have nothing at this time. Administrator's report.
Just a couple of quick things. The big thing, um, it's, it's obviously the presentation you had earlier tonight is a very exciting. I don't want to, hell, it's just say it's probably a once in a lifetime development here. Uh, the fact that they're paying cash, the fact that it's fifty-five million and that they're growing is going to be a very big deal. And we've, we've known about it for a while. I think a lot of you have known on the council that there's been quite a bit of work that's gone into getting them to the point they're at now. From everybody, their end, our end, out of our consultants. And there's probably going to be quite a bit of work going for the next year, year and a half as we work with them. So that's, that's a big thing. Um, they haven't made an official announcement yet, but they're here at our meetings. And, um, pretty soon, and, and as Tim mentioned, any day they're gonna get going. It's true. I mean, probably in a week or two, you're gonna see a lot of pretty big equipment coming in and that's, that's exciting. That's one thing. Uh, the other thing is obviously the brand new website is up and running. And starting this month, this is the first month that I believe we had every committee meeting filmed and then uploaded overnight. So by the next morning, anything that happens in any of your committees is going to be filmed. Because of these wireless microphones, it sounds, even though the cameras across the room, it sounds like we're right here talking. And I, I will just tell you that this is probably going to change the way you do business as a council. Because tonight is an exception. You have quite a few people that are interested here. Uh, but a lot of your meetings, there's nobody here. There's Frank. I'm sorry, Frank's here at, at every council meeting. So I, I will tell you, and, and Sean as well. But we have quite a few views on our videos. And Sean has been, and Ruben have been at almost every, I mean, do you guys go to every meeting of every town and every town board? And, I mean, it's, it's getting these meetings out and online is a big deal. And, and though it's a big deal for us on our website, we're doing what they're doing, too. And, um, it's sort of like an on-demand type of government. People can be home at midnight and watch it or at, up at three in the morning and watch, you know. But the idea of getting your committee meetings out there, though, is that there really shouldn't be any excuse for people coming to a full council meeting and not knowing what you're doing. Or having you act on something and somebody saying, I didn't know that that was gonna happen. Because it will be, if not the next day, fairly quickly, it will be up and online. So that's an exciting thing for sure. Um, and then I'll, I'll digress a little bit off of the website and just, uh, recognize that Becky has recently been certified and awarded as a certified municipal clerk in the state of Wisconsin. And that's a, a very, very big deal. There was a article in the paper on it. And, and it's the result of running to the Clerk's Institute at UWGB. And you had gone, how many years? Three years. Yep. So, that's a very big deal as well. Other than that, um, we'll get to the budget later on and that's, that's what I've got.
And the next part is number ten, closed session. Uh, Wisconsin statute, considering employment promotion, compensation and performance of value data of an, any city employee who is subject to the jurisdictions and authority of the council. The reason for this closed session is to review the wage performances for the two thousand and fifteen budget. Council may choose to reconvene into open session at the completion of this closed session in order to take action on items from the closed session. I would need a motion then to go into closed session.
I will make a motion to go into closed session. Do you need a time?
Yes.
Seven thirty-four?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go into closed session. Roll call.
Runner?
Aye.
Ray Asmussen?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
I've got seven thirty on my phone.
Sorry, I.
No, that's okay.
Fuck, I said it.
Seven thirty on the computer, too.
Right. Ready? We're back into open session, uh, for the two thousand and fifteen proposed budget review.
Okay. We have, we've taken a look at each of the committees and you'll see on your agenda, there's recommendations to approve the proposed twenty fifteen budget. Got Finance Committee, Public Works, Recreation and the Police, Fire and Ambulance Committee have reviewed their sections, recommended approval as it's been submitted. Now, what, what is technically on the agenda for tonight is the budget summary, which is what you have submitted. And it is just that, it's a summary of what has been drafted so far. This is the document that we need to publish in the paper by the end of October. The intent right now would be that we'll post it the end of this week, October twenty fourth, publish it October thirtieth. And then there will be enough time between then and the public hearing and your adoption, which is November seventeenth. On a quick rundown of the, uh, general budget summary. The general property tax revenues are proposed to increase point zero eight percent, which is what's, um, it's seven hundred forty-nine, five sixty-eight in twenty fourteen, in twenty fifteen, uh, because of new, new construction in town. Uh, it'll be, and they call it net new construction, seven hundred fifty thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars. Tiff district tax, we had budgeted in twenty fourteen, one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Um, because of the twenty fourteen actual, it is closer to one hundred and fifty-two thousand, so that's a seven thousand dollar increase. Mobile home fees, we've kept the same at ninety-six hundred. Special assessments, there will be special assessments coming on the, um, the road projects that we've had here. We've got the, that twenty-five hundred. Intergovernmental revenues, uh, we had taken in six hundred eighty-one thousand, six seventy-five in twenty fourteen. That is a cut of point eight nine percent. Shared revenue, um, expenditure restraint, those are all kind of shared state revenues as well as, um, other programs that we get. Why they call it intergovernmental revenues. Regulation and compliance is a lot of our licensing. Uh, that's a proposal to increase seven point eight one percent to forty thousand, fifteen dollars. Charges for services, we're increasing that nine point seven three percent from one hundred eighteen thousand, twenty dollars to one twenty-nine, five hundred. Charges for services is obviously, as it suggests, a garbage pickup, um, any type of service that we do for the public and we charge a fee for in lieu of taxes. Other general revenues, we're increasing from ten thousand, five hundred to seventeen thousand, nine hundred, seventy percent increase. And commercial revenue, which is in the way of our interest on our investments, increasing that because of our actuals. We've had it at seven hundred seventy-five dollars in the budget, increasing it to twelve seventy-five, so one thousand, two hundred seventy-five for next year. Overall revenue in twenty fourteen, one point seven five four million, seven hundred fifty-three dollars. Increasing that to one million, seven seventy-eight, five twenty-eight, which is a one point three five percent increase. And again, when we talk about property taxes, those are increasing point zero eight percent. So the bulk of our increase is charges for services and in other areas there. When we go through expenditures, um, just a, maybe I can just summarize this because that's the big area that we went line by line through at the different committees. Uh, but in general, our expenditures are proposed to match what we had just laid out for revenues. An increase of one point three five percent. Again, the general property tax that's levied, we're looking at, it's not really a thousand dollars, it's about six hundred dollars, so. Are there any questions on that? I, I hate to, we'll get into the habit of this now to refer back to the committee meetings, but we did, I feel, do a very well line by line. Review on that, so that's a, a benefit to be able to review back on that. Again, this is still a draft budget. This is, the summary here would go in the paper. What we would probably need is a motion to approve the budget summary for publication.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Anything on that that Patrick just explained?
And we'll go through this again in November.
Roll call?
We'll do a roll call.
Roll call?
Runner?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Asmussen?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Did everybody that had committee meetings set, committee meetings when you had them this last month?
Do you have notes in your folder there?
Do I have the notes?
Yeah, that's technically the folder there. At the very end, does it say?
Er, oh, the.
I'll take it. There should be a note. Becky usually has the sheet on combining when all of the meetings were. What I could tell you is probably the very last sheet that's in there. Is there anything in there?
Negative.
Okay.
There is some sort of an unmarked envelope, which I don't know.
Did Finance schedule a meeting?
November third.
November third.
Now, we're also gonna be looking at holding that special
Yep.
City council meeting, probably afterwards.
After, okay.
Uh, before or after, so for Finance, you're gonna have the late group request. Probably gonna talk about City Hall, where we're at with that. And then have a special council meeting. So do you want to start it earlier, five thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five thirty and then six thirty, the special council meeting?
How about immediately following?
Right, 'cause I think it's maybe last longer than that.
The problem we may have, and maybe, maybe we'll talk about flip flopping those because if you're going to be bringing in people to interview them, you can get an idea on a special council meeting, how long it's gonna last. Or at least you know how long that part of it would last.
Yeah, I, I.
There's gonna be a closed session at that meeting, too, to talk about pending litigation. So that can be after your interviews.
Make it for a different night.
And after you've had.
Yep.
Make it for a different night.
That's too much in one.
Finance or the, or the special meeting?
The special meeting, the special council meeting for the proposed candidates who want to, but throw their hat in the ring, please, make it for another night.
Well, the benefit is
The next night.
Attorney Kelly's gonna be there.
Right.
So you're already gonna have a special council meeting. Let's, let's figure it out next week. We'll take a look at how many candidates you have. But Attorney Kelly is gonna be there and if you can knock out two meetings in one trip.
Yeah, right. I see your point.
All right. I, I'm, I'm actually thinking the council meeting should come first.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be my.
Because if you know that there's five people, five minutes apiece, it's right there, bam, you know.
In that way, they're not sitting waiting. I don't mind if the late group has to wait for a while. But the people that are applying for the job shouldn't have to.
Real fast and push them through.
Good point.
Good point.
Okay, Public Works?
Um, we had set that for Monday, the tenth.
Okay. Time?
I think we said six P M.
Yeah.
Okay. Public Property?
Are we gonna have to talk about that, that land?
I think we should, I think we should probably set
Okay, what's?
A meeting, because there's a couple of things sort of hanging out there that we could talk about. It's just.
Okay, can we set one for Wednesday, the twelfth? Who's on Public Property with me?
Um, me.
And Wednesday's work for you now, right?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday, so, so Wednesday, the twelfth?
Wednesday, the twelfth.
Perfect.
Okay. Public Property? A time?
Six, okay?
Okay.
Patrick, six?
Yep, that'll be fine.
Recreation? Is there anything hanging out there for, I'm trying to think.
There's really not right now. I mean, we did a little bit of a report, so maybe right now.
No meeting?
This time of year, there's really winding down with the weather.
Police, Fire and Ambulance?
Yeah, let's, um.
Have you done like the second?
Stick with the.
When? Well, the problem is you have November third. Not to jump to Plant Commission, but Plant Commission is meeting Tuesday, the eleventh to talk about the TID creation. It's gonna be a full TIF for the agri-pure project. There's going to be a joint review board, a representative from the schools, the county. And then there's gonna be a public hearing for the Plant Commission right after that, too. So there's already a default, uh, Tuesday, November eleventh.
Um, I was gonna say Wednesday, the fifth for police. That work for you, Jerry? Who's on that with me? Nick or, oh, you two. Yeah, good, good. Okay, six o'clock.
Sure.
Wednesday, the fifth?
Yep. And then, um.
Six o'clock?
Yeah. Scott, we are both also on ordinance? Can I just have it after that or?
I think we should, I think we should double up on it.
We have.
So we'll tell Shani.
We still have ordinance?
Yeah, because Attorney Kelly's coming back on the pit bull vicious animal.
Yeah, right, okay. And when you plan on that, November?
We'll do it following the police on the, uh, fifth of one, of Wednesday of November.
Fifth after police, okay. And Planning Commission, you said was Tuesday, the eleventh?
Yep.
And that is at six?
I have to double check, because there's a joint review board that's, I think, either at five-thirty or six. Uh, they just sent the
Oh.
Here's a notice that just came to City Hall for,
Okay.
We just sent, Eller sent out the notice, it came out today.
Let me know. Okay, that should be all of the committees. I would look for then, if there's nothing others, then I guess we would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, second to adjourn, nine forty-eight. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.